I'd like to call the December 12th, 2013 meeting of Williamsburg City Council to order. Ms. Scott, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Newton?
Here.
Mr. Ponce?
Here.
Mayor Holman?
Here.
Vice Mayor Frye?
Here.
Mr. Foster?
Here.
Our first order of business for today are council minutes from the meetings of November 12th and November 14th, 2013, and the joint city council EDA meeting of November 22nd, 2013. Are there any additions or corrections? Hearing known?
Mr. Mayor, I move that city council approve the minutes from the November 12th and November 14th meetings and the joint council EDA meeting of November 22nd, 2013.
Second?
I have a motion, a second. Would you read? Would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Newton?
Aye.
Mr. Ponce?
Aye.
Mayor Holman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Frye?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Our next order of business is a matter of special privilege, and this is both a joyous and sad occasion. I'm going to ask Ms. Scott to please meet me at the microphone. D. Scott has served the city council as clerk for five years, and has served the city of Williamsburg for 21 years, and is going to retire on January 1st. So, a happy day for her, a sad day for the city. But in recognition of that, we have a proclamation from the city that I would like to read, and then we'll give you a chance to say a few words.
Okay.
This is a resolution of commendation and appreciation for Donna F. Scott. Whereas clerk of council, Donna F. Scott, will retire January 1st, 2014, after 21 years of outstanding service to the city of Williamsburg. And whereas Ms. Scott first began her career in the finance department in July 1992, rising to planning department secretary in February 1994, and whereas in January 2009, the city council was extremely pleased to appoint Ms. Scott to the position of clerk of council to the city of Williamsburg. And whereas Ms. Scott produced minutes for the city council, planning commission, architectural review board, and the board of zoning appeals that were without exception, adopted and recorded without modification or clarification. No small task, I might add. Whereas as record manager for the city, Ms. Scott emphasized the integrity of public records and the importance of information governance and public transparency. Through her leadership and persistent guidance, city council and city department records are accessible, well organized, and orderly and appropriately preserved. And whereas although city council and city staff will miss D.'s service on behalf of the city, she will be equally missed for her charm, ready smile, and happy outlook that she bestowed on us every day. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council and city manager do hereby congratulate Donna F. Scott on her retirement and thank her for her professional and personal dedication to service and to the kindness she offered to the city of Williamsburg family. And signed by city council and the city manager. D., congratulations.
I really don't know what to say. I look forward to being on the other side, and I will only come and say nice things, I promise. But I do look at you all as part of my family, and I will miss you all. And with nothing more before I cry, I will say thank you so much.
We'll be missed, D.
I said, "D." earlier. We're going to miss her more than she missed me.
Our next order of business is background presentations, and we have a presentation by me as chair of the finance and audit committee, and Ann Wall, manager of audit manager, and Phil Serra, finance director, on the comprehensive annual financial report for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2013. The city's finance and audit committee meets annually to discuss the audit report, and this year's meeting was held on December 4th. The committee consists of Mia as chair, Gwen Williams, and Bob Taylor. The finance and audit committee meets with auditors and staff to discuss the audit engagement and internal controls, and for a briefing on the financial report and results of operations for the year. Also, an important part of the meeting is to discuss concerns that the independent auditors may have regarding internal controls, staff training, or anything they feel needs to be addressed based on their review of the financial systems and procedures in place during the year. The committee heard a presentation from Ann Wall, manager with Robinson, Farmer, and Cox and Associates. Her report focused on the audit engagement, internal controls, and accounting standards. That was followed by finance director Phil Serra's presentation on the operating results and financial position at year end. The committee accepted the auditor's report and forwards it to city council for their acceptance. Minutes of the meeting were distributed to city council members on Tuesday of this week. We'll first hear from Ann Wall, audit manager from Robinson, Farmer, and Cox Associates. She will speak briefly about the audit engagement. She will be followed by finance director Phil Serra, who will brief council on the results of the operations for the year. Following the presentation, we return to city council for any questions they may have. Ann, thank you for being here.
Thank you. It's my pleasure to be here to speak to you briefly about the city's comprehensive annual financial report for the year ending June 30, 2013. I believe the report, complete report's been posted on the city's website, and it's certainly a comprehensive document. It's 106 pages long, and there's also an 11-page introductory section. Local governments like the city are required to have an audit conducted each year. Your city's audit was conducted in accordance with generally accepted accounting and auditing standards. The report has been submitted to the auditor of public accounts in accordance with the November 30th statutory deadline, and it'll be included in the auditor of public accounts comparative cost report. The format of the report is the same as it's been in the last several years. This year, I do want to draw your attention to the fact that the Williamsburg redevelopment and housing authority is reported in the city's audit report. Just some of the changes that went on this year, they're reported as something called a component unit. So, they're not included in your financial statements. They're kind of off to the side on exhibits one and two in the city's report. And there's a footnote in there that kind of describes what's going on, note 1B. In terms of the audit engagement, we're required to issue three opinions. They really kind of correlate to the three facets of the audit. The financial statement audit, the internal control audit, and then our review of your federal program dollars and certain compliance associated with those. I'll just give you kind of an overview. All of those opinions were clean and unqualified. There was something that was effective this year. The American Institute of CPAs, they issued these things called the clarity standards, and they really kind of affected the way the opinions looked. It made them a little bit longer, the opinions, but there's headers in each of the opinions if you were to look at it, so you can go to the place that actually where the auditor's opinion is. It's on the top of page two, and it actually says opinions, and you can go find the language that translates into the city's opinion. And that's on all three of those opinions, or those standards apply to those. The city has, is going to, has or is going to submit this report to the Government Finance Officers Association in order to receive the certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting. I believe the city's received this for the last 27 years. We believe that this report meets the certificate program's requirements and will be, will receive this award again. I want to let you know that the Department of Finance assisted greatly in the preparation and the review of this report. There's certain elements of it that are actually required to be prepared by the client or by the city. The management's discussion and analysis, which provides an overview of the financial statements, is very detailed, a lot of comparisons to the prior year. There's a transmittal letter in here that's prepared by the city that speaks to the local economy, demographic information, long-term planning. And then the statistical tables at the back, those were also drafted by city staff. The part in the middle really was based on your financial statements, and we drafted that as your auditors. And while auditing standards don't require you to draft your report, they're kind of moving in that direction, but they do require clients to designate an individual with suitable skill and knowledge to really oversee our services and be able to approve and accept responsibility for the financial statements, the footnotes, the schedule of expenditures of federal awards. So drafting the report would allow this to be much more meaningful. I want you to know that the cooperation we've received from city staff was excellent. Their preparation for the audit, they were very well prepared, and their professionalism was very much appreciated. I was on site during all the field work. We come in the summer, and we do preliminary work, a lot of that internal control work that we were talking about, and then we come in the fall and do a lot more of the substantive work. We proposed literally just two adjusting entries at the end of the audit, and they're both actually really were very immaterial, but they were posted to the city's books. And so the city's books actually mirror the financial statements here. This speaks well to, you know, any interim reports that the city's looking at during the year, and just all the general good work that goes into your financial reporting. We did not issue a management letter this year, but that doesn't mean we didn't talk about internal controls. You know, we certainly did a lot and reviewed matters. We did perform an information technology review this year. Certain aspects of the audit get really more and more technical every year, so we have a specialist in our firm that came and met with your IT director and reviewed a lot of the IT policies and procedures and processes, and he found everything to be working on the way it should, and that's, I want you to know that. But it's also good for us as your auditors because we rely on those processes and procedures and information technology to be working. We didn't encounter any difficulties in dealing with management over any internal control matters or any disagreements on any reporting matters. There were a couple of new governmental accounting standards board statements that were effective this year that really, GASB 63 and GASB 65, and they're detailed in the footnotes, note 16, and there was a restatement to beginning net position as a result of one of those having to do with some debt issuance costs that had to be expensed rather than capitalized. A little bit of terminology change related to one of those standards as well. On the horizon, and I believe we talked about this some last year, is GASB statement number 68, accounting and financial reporting for pensions. And this year's report actually has a footnote in there, note 15. And that standard actually revises and establishes new requirements for most governments to, that provide a pension benefit. The standard is required that that pension benefit liability be reported as a long-term liability for the first time beginning in FY 15. So it won't be next year, but it'll be the following year in your government-wide balance sheet, which is the very first exhibit. Currently, that unfunded liability is just reported in the back of the report in the supplementary schedule. And the fiscal impact of reporting that liability may lead to negative assets, and it'll be considered in future audits. That really concludes my comments, and thank you again for the opportunity to serve as auditors for the city.
Right. Thank you, Ann. Phil?
Good afternoon, Mayor Holman and members of council. I'll go through a series of slides that talk about where we were at the end of June, and that are all summarized in the audit report. A lot of these slides are a summary of the management's discussion and analysis section, which as I always say is the cliff notes of the report. But we'll talk about the results of the operation for the general fund and utility fund, and show you what we did with the fund balance for the general fund this year in relation to the reserve policy, and show you where we're at with the working capital of the utility fund, show you some multi-year trends, and as Ann mentioned, show you a little more about where we are with the VRS pension plan funding at year end. In terms of general fund revenues, and this includes sales taxes for fiscal year 2013, we ended the year at 37.4 million. It was just a little over a percent higher than the prior year. Okay, everything is planned, very, very close to budget for, on the revenue side. On the expenditure side, we were actually down a little bit in expenditures for the year compared to last year, and that's mainly because of a reduction in the amount of capital projects that were completed during the year. So the overall expenditures were down a little over 4% for the year. And looking at it in terms of budget, the revenues compared to budget were over for the year, almost a quarter million dollars spread out by these categories. And then on the expenditure side, we were under budget by almost 1.1 million dollars. So this is, this is the biggest part of the surplus for the year was the savings we had in, on the spending side. But I wanted to highlight, most of the savings was in the city department spending, $841,000. That is broken down into four major categories here. On the operations side, we saved some money with not having to subsidize the public assistance fund as much as we had budgeted for the year, some savings in fire, planning, recreation, police, a little bit in the refuse collection, and IT. There were savings throughout the departments, but these were the departments that kind of stood out a little bit higher as a percentage of these savings for the year. As far as salary savings and benefit savings, still had an open position in fire, so we had some savings there, with some turnover in police, so we had some salary savings there. Also, same with landscaping. And about 150,000 of the benefit savings related, about 45,000 of the 150 was savings alone in the health care plan by switching plans at the beginning of fiscal year 13. And then there was some little bit of residual savings in some various part-time positions that went on field during the year. And about 92,000 in some machinery and equipment lines throughout the general fund budget. But with the revenues over budget of almost a quarter million dollars and the expenditures under budget, almost 1.1 million, total surplus for the operating fund was about 1.3 million for the year. That breaks down to about a little over 4% of the operating revenues. And that compares with the last four fiscal years, we averaged a little over 5% overall. So we're right in line with what we've had as far as surpluses over the last four years. You've seen this graph before. This is just showing where we ended up the year, expenditures and revenues in relation to the budget. The budget is the dashed line, but for the last four years anyway, that most of the savings were on the expenditure side. And this is the actual surplus, the difference between expenditures and revenues on the operating fund back to 2004. So we just continued the line a little bit more since last year. And this is the total governmental funds. This includes the public assistance fund, the sales tax fund, and the general fund. Total revenues and expenditures back to 1983. You can see there's periods of savings and periods of spending with the red line there. And that, the red line, the jag in the red line is really the skewness of the capital projects over that 30-year timeframe, and that's how we ended up at the year with a gap very far right. And then we threw this in here just to show you, here's where fund balance ended up for the last 30 years, and it's kind of a direct correlation of the spending and the savings that we have as a result of having surpluses on the operating fund. So, but just kind of wanted to throw that in there, it's kind of interesting. And then getting back to fund balance, we began the year with a 27.8 million dollar fund balance, added the revenues, take away the expenditures, and the transfer to the public assistance fund, ended the year with fund balance right at 30.6 million dollars. And it's broken out by these categories, the non-spendables or a little bit of prepaid's, and then the value of the Tioga and Lorre Haji properties, properties that are on the market right now, so we can't spend, spend that part of fund balance. I'm going to skip down. The unassigned is 11.4 million dollars, that's 35%. That's your reserve policy since we've had in place since 2003. What we did this year, we put the residual in assigned, so the 4.2 million dollars is, you'll see that number on your green sheets this month, that's the amount that we've carried over from FY 13. And we put the residual at 13.8 million to fund future capital projects. So we do have a lot in assigned fund balance, and that's the reason now. And you can see that 11.4 is the 35% of the operating revenues for the year. The good thing is, the 13.8 million that we have as assigned fund balance in addition to the carryover projects goes a long way at funding the five-year capital plan, so it's, that combined with the 4 million a year we get in sales taxes, pretty much enough to fund the capital plan for the next five years. And then looking at cash investments, 26 million dollars. So we're in checking accounts, CDs, and an FDIC insured account at the end of the year, and about 1.7 million dollars in the LGIP. In fact, the LGIP earned about 16 basis points for the year, and that's a little bit less than it did last year. But the average yield on the city's full portfolio for the year is a little over half a percent. And the utility fund revenues were a little bit more than expenses by about 400,000 dollars for the year. And then if you add in the interest income and connection fees and take away the interest on the bonds, we ended up the year with a net increase, an increase in net assets of just over 200,000 for the year. So it's still positive, which is what we want. And then going down here, cash investments for the utility fund were a little over a million dollars, 4 million dollars at the end of the year, a million dollars in receivables. So comparing current assets of 5.1 million with the current liabilities, everything that's due within one year, including the current one year's worth of debt service, puts a working capital, which is the difference between current assets and liabilities, at 3.7 million. And this is the schedule. You'll see this in the audit report, but what you won't see in the audit report is the June 30th, 2013. We just found out about what this new number is, so I included it through this presentation. Found out about three weeks ago. But right now, we're showing actuarial value of assets at 43.5 million dollars compared to the liability, the present value of the, all of the promised benefits for existing and future retirees at 60.8 million. So the difference is 17.3, and that's called the unfunded actuarial approved liability. Okay? And as a percentage of the assets over that liability, we gained a little ground. We went from 71% up to 71.6. Ideally, it'd be nice to be at 100%. I don't think any public pension funds are anywhere near 100% at this point, but, and we had a pretty good conversation at the finance audit committee meeting about the components of this, why they changed and everything. We're going to probably really be getting into that as we implement GASB number 68 for fiscal year 15. I'll give you a little bit more information as to why the numbers are what they are. And this is that same, all those numbers just graphed out. You can see the gap, the gap is about the same at the end, but it's, the trend is going in the wrong direction with the slow performance in the stock market on the asset side, and then the huge liability that we're inferring with the promise of pension plans. But that's all I have. I'd be glad to answer any questions you have.
Phil, thank you very much. Let me come back to council for any questions, discussions, and for both Phil and Ann.
Just a comment first, and then maybe one or two questions. Here, this is a great opportunity to thank city staff for a terrific job. As we think about being good stewards of the public funds, there are two components to that. And one is the diligent adherence to proper procedures and policy, and then the other is prudent practices in investing expenditure of those funds. So the control side is really important to make sure there's not loss or waste of any kind, and then on the expense side, making sure that everything's in line with the money that's taken in. And each year, I'm just more and more impressed with the work that goes on as city staff continues to do just a wonderful job under pretty significant pressure, both on the workload and just on the financial side. So that doesn't happen easily, and it certainly doesn't happen accidentally. So Phil, I know you'd be the first to say, it's not the finance department that's doing everything, you're collecting all the data, but you and your team are a big part of it. But it's really the entire city staff coming together and working towards this one purpose in a way that helps everybody succeed. So I just want to express appreciation to everyone for that. Could you talk just a little bit about, Ms. Wall mentioned the GASB 68 coming down the pipe. What on the statement that we see, or which charts, would things look different today if that was in place right now?
It's not a statement of net, net position. They changed that name on us this year. Down at the very bottom of that, it shows net assets, and that's what's going to happen. We're going to have a liability of that 17 million dollar unfunded liability. We'll have that to be booking in there as a liability. We'll also have the city's share of the school boards unfunded liability. So that could be huge. So we, and we don't know what those numbers are yet because we'll be implementing in FY 15, and those numbers are really going to change over the next couple of years. But it's going to result in possibly negative net assets at the very bottom of that statement.
And help me with understanding how the VRS monies are accounted for. We put money into a larger pool, and ours is somehow held as a share within that pool of some sort, so that as the pool grows, our share maintains its position, and if the pool gets bigger, we get more, and if it decreases, we get less. Is that fair?
That's fair.
It's interesting though, and I really, I don't want this to turn into any criticism of the investment practices of VRS, but when I look at this chart about the progress on the funding, and think, and I'm only thinking with my own anecdotal recollection of how the investment markets have performed, I certainly understand why in fiscal years '08 and particularly '09, we see that sharp decrease coming into '10. But I don't quite see this, I don't see the same degree of recovery that I seem to have sensed overall in investment markets when you consider where we, where we as, the financial circumstances of the country were at the low point. And I don't expect you to have an answer for that, but at some point in the future, if we could just get some comparison about how, what the general market trends over the past five or six years have been, and how that charts to the VRS progress, I'd really be interested in seeing that. I don't know what we'd do with it, but it'd just be helpful maybe in understanding where we're making progress and maybe why we're not.
We talked a little bit about that at the finance audit committee meeting, about the different components of how those numbers are, what they are with earnings rates, discount rates, things like that. But we're going to really get into that in the next couple of years.
If I can inject, I mean, one of the problems is it's something we have no control over. So we really are. And I think in addition to those numbers changing before 15, I think once governments and localities and others begin to realize the implications of this, that I anticipate that GASB 68 may actually be changed as we move forward. So it's hard to tell at this point exactly what that impact's going to be in two years from now, because likely these numbers are going to change in important ways, and the regulation itself may change in important ways. So it's, we're playing a guessing game right now.
And let's take GASB 68 out of, out of the conversation. If we just look at the performance of VRS investments over this time period, and if it significantly lags behind most other market indicators, then I think we have an obligation, just as we do to take care of the money that we collect and keep here, we have an obligation to put pressure on somebody to either do a better job or find somebody who can, because there are people out there doing a better job than what I'm seeing here. At least that's, that's my sense.
And while we're on the subject, can you, can you speak to how those investment decisions are made? Because I am sure that they're, you know, they're shackled much more than the free market is in terms of how to make investment, what type of risk they can take. And so I'm sure they're, they're limited by their ability to make investments.
Absolutely. There are a lot of rules that they have to abide by in what they can put those pension assets in, mostly long-term, obviously, which, you know, used to yield higher returns. And that's, everything's changed the last four years since the recession. But on the other side, they have to set But on the other side, they have to set the rates every two years, and sometimes we're playing catch-up. And that's what they've been doing for the last six or eight years, is playing catch-up with the low performance in the stock market and with the high price of the price of those liabilities, because, you know, they're rich plans in some instances, depending on the classifications with VRS.
What we could do is we could get a report on VRS investment performance over time, and how that relates to other pension plans. And we could pull that information together and get it back to you, either in a work session or simply provide it to you directly. So we can get that from there.
And the Finance Director, Barry Faeson, he's the Finance Director of VRS, he'd be glad to come down and talk with us.
Yeah, I think it might be useful as we move into the next budget cycle to have, that maybe as part of a work session, so that the public can see that information as well.
We'll do it.
Thank you, that's all.
Yeah. Scott, anything?
Just to follow up on that, the obvious concern is, you know, city and state, you know, government employees have worked hard, made their contribution, you know, we as a government body have made our contribution, and this fund has to be protected. You know, we've promised it to these employees, they're deserving of it. And so we hate to see that gap get greater and then, you know, eventually have a significant problem that we will have to deal with down the road of refunding essentially, you know, these retirement pension funds. So, but just, I guess another comment, you know, I was particularly pleased, you know, despite, you know, flat revenues over the last few years, we've been able to really tighten our purse strings, cut expenses, but see our reserve funds, you know, increase. And I think that that's everything that Councilman Vice Mayor Friling had spoke to about, just the physical management of the city and the staff and the hard work that everybody's been doing, you know, working harder with less to accomplish more. And I think that's reflected in these numbers. So congratulations.
I too want to congratulate the staff. I think you've all done a remarkable job. I did have a question about the seventy-one point six percent that were the pension fund thing. How does that compare to similar cities, Charlottesville, our people in our jurisdiction? Do we have any feel for that?
It's all public information. I've seen other localities, they're all within between seventy and eighty percent from what I can see. So we're in the ballpark, and there's nothing unusual here. And we can get that information for you, a breakdown where everyone's at easily.
Well, in the whole world, there's no rush, but I just think it'd be interesting if we're, as long as we're all kind of on the same path.
To that end, if you think it's appropriate, this might be something worth having a few minutes devoted towards at our next retreat.
Yeah. Yeah, and the other problem is, if you look at the liability side, that's essentially the present discounted value of those obligations. Well, with interest rates next to zero, that's, they're going to be very different if interest rates go up. So you may actually see, if interest rates change, a big change on the liability side, as well as if performance in asset markets change, a big change on that side. So again, there are a lot of moving parts here, and right now, you know, where we're going to be even next year is very much going to depend upon what happens to interest rates, what happens to, you know, asset performance. And again, there is a lag in that asset performance that hasn't yet shown up on this. So I think, you know, wait and see. I think some things will change, hopefully for the better.
Don't you as economists control all of this?
Oh, yeah, of course. That's why we're roaring along so well. Okay, any other questions or comments? We need to accept this report. Do we need a motion to do that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'll take a motion. Okay, I have a motion to accept the financial report as submitted. And a second, would you call the roll, please, Ms. Scott?
I.
Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
Mayor Holman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Friling.
Aye.
Mr. Foster.
Aye.
Our next order of business, public hearings, we have two today. One was withdrawn. The first public hearing today is PCR thirteen dash oh-three-three, sign regulation update. This is proposed ordinance thirteen dash thirty-three and thirteen dash thirty-four. Mr. Nestor.
The city's sign regulations date from the adoption of the new zoning ordinance in nineteen ninety-one, and we've done major revisions several times, most recently in two thousand and eight, when we made some changes in a corridor sign district. The basic regulations for signs are in good shape, but a number of them need to be updated. And what you see on the screen is our sign districts map. Instead of tying the sign regulations into specific zoning districts, we've created sign districts that may include a number of different zoning districts, but we have residential, Colonial Williamsburg Historic Area, Downtown, and Corridor sign districts. All of these districts relate well to the underlying zoning except for two areas, and that is the Arts and Cultural District along Richmond Road, which you see here, and that is a combination of LB-two and B-two, and the College Commercial Area that goes from One Tribe Place to Tribe Square and includes the delis in the middle. So to recognize the special character of these areas, we're proposing to create a new Midtown Sign District that would include the two areas you see highlighted on this map. This is an enlargement of the sign district around the Arts District, and it shows that we're also extending the Corridor Sign District down to Bacon Street right here, down to where Peter Chang's is, and including the Chesapeake Bank. And that gives this intersection of Moncello, Lafayette, and Richmond Road, all the same sign regulations. And this is that district overlaid on an aerial photo, and that stretches from Brook Street on the east all the way up to Bacon and along Lafayette. That includes, this is all the LB-two district. The Corridor Sign District expanded. Then this is the Midtown Sign District in the College Commercial Area. And again, on an aerial photograph, you see One Tribe Place and Tribe Square, and this is alongside of the Braxton Court Residential Area. In the Midtown Sign District, it's proposed to increase freestanding sign area allowed from twelve to eighteen square feet for an individual sign, twenty to twenty-four square feet for a sign shared by two or more businesses. Illuminated open signs would be allowed. They're already allowed in our Corridor Sign District, but they're not allowed in the Downtown Sign District, which is now what the Midtown Sign District is regulated by. Sidewalk signs would be allowed on private property, and I'll get into the issue of sidewalk signs in more detail later on. Ten-square-foot decorative flags allowed, and now you could have open on a decorative flag. And banner signs for art galleries and museums would continue to be allowed. Window signs were, and this is throughout the city, we're proposing to change that regulation to allow fifty percent of window area in non-illuminated signage. Signs on the outside of a window would be counted towards your sign area, inside would not. And illuminated open signs would be allowed in Midtown and Corridor, could be neon or LED signs, but that continue to be prohibited in the Downtown Sign District. So, I mean, this is an example of the window signs that we're talking about. And here, this is the open sign you see. In the corridors, there are a number of open signs in the Midtown Sign District that are not allowed under the downtown regulations. That's one of the things we looked at, and whether those should be allowed, and the conclusion the Planning Commission reached is that they should. Neon signs, we had a lot of discussion about this, whether they should be allowed or not. The Commission felt that we should continue to prohibit them throughout the city except for open signs. Now, some neon signs, like you see at Paul's Deli, are grandfathered and can remain. Some signs, like you see here, the frozen yogurt neon sign, that's not allowed, and that would need to be removed, as would there, you can see, the non-open signs here do not meet the current regulations. So we discussed whether or not that would be appropriate, and Planning Commission felt those types of signs were not appropriate for the city. This is another example of the little lottery neon sign that you see. We do have a provision, however, that signs that are three or more feet back from a window are not counted as signs. So the barbecue you see on the Red Hot and Blue Building, that's more than three feet behind the window. That's not counted as a sign. Walgreen has a neon sign over their entrance that, again, is set back more than three feet from the window. Grand opening signs, we allow them now for ten days. It's proposed to allow them for thirty days. That's in line with what James City County allows. Strings of light bulbs, we allow that during holiday season, the season we're in now. And you see a lot of those around town. They're not allowed otherwise. It's proposed to allow white non-flashing lights on trees on private property in the Downtown Sign District. This is where we have those in the Downtown Sign District now. This is around the Tap House Grill next to Barrett's. Decorative flags, as I mentioned, you could have, you'll be allowed to have ten square foot in the Downtown and Midtown, fifteen in the Corridor. The regulations say open is prohibited on a decorative flag. Commission felt that open should be allowed, and we're also allowing decorative flags on flagpoles under certain restrictions. For example, this open flag in the, for the gallery above Williamsonoma, that's eight and a half square feet, that meets our regulations, that would be allowed. The open sign here for Whitley Peanuts on Richmond Road, size is fine, but it would need to be put on the building, not on the freestanding sign. And we're proposing to allow, when you have a grouping of at least two governmental flags, like the US and Virginia flag you see here, you could add a corporate or logo flag to that. Here at the Sterling Manor Apartments, you have a Roseland Property sign. Here at the Hilton Gardens, you have a Hilton corporate flag. So the flags would have to be the same proportion as the governmental flags, but they would be permitted. Now, the bulk of the changes that we were talking about were sidewalk signs. And as I'm sure you've noticed, we have a proliferation of sidewalk signs in the downtown area. These primarily are not allowed by the current zoning regulations. So one of the things we talked about when looking at signage was, should sidewalk signs be allowed under certain circumstances? And if the answer is yes, then what should the design criteria be for those sidewalk signs? And we have two classes of sidewalk signs. One are signs on private property, and one are signs on public sidewalks. And right now, the only public sidewalk that we allow private uses on is on Long Prince George Street between North Henry Street and North Boundary Street. And we allowed sidewalk cafes and menu boards. Well, there's a lot more menu boards out there. And with the continuation of the sidewalk improvements one more block to the west, we thought it was really imperative that we take a look at the sidewalk signs, decide what we want to do, and enact the appropriate regulations. So after taking a good look at these and looking at pictures of all the signs, Rod Rhodes went out and measured all the sidewalk signs in downtown area. We came up with proposed criteria for sidewalk signs. And you see those on the slide, six square feet maximum size, non-illuminated, one per business with a separate exterior entrance. If you have two businesses sharing the same entrance, you still can only have one sign. Where there's no on-street parking, which is the Aroma side of Prince George Street, now, signs would have to be placed either at the curb or at the building. The reason for this is not having a sign in the middle of the sidewalk obstructing the pedestrian flow. A five-foot clear zone would be required beside a sign, only displayed when the business is open. You do have an option, you could have two six, three-square-foot chalkboards instead of a six-square-foot A-frame sign. Sign permit would be required, but ARB approval would not be required. ARB reviewed this and felt, because of the nature of the sign, if there was satisfactory design criteria in the zoning ordinance, they didn't feel the need to review them themselves. So the design criteria we've added are signs must be wood, but may have a metal frame, rough-cut plywood not acceptable, plastic not acceptable. You could have a chalkboard, but not a dry erase board. Colors from the Design Review Guidelines approved color palette. Now sidewalk signs would be allowed on a public sidewalk on that specified portion of Prince George Street. Otherwise, would be allowed on private property in the downtown and college commercial portion of the Midtown Sign District. They wouldn't be allowed in the Arts District portion or in the Corridor Sign District. And this is Prince George Street. You see an assortment of sidewalk signs there. Along Prince George Street, there are eleven signs, four with maybe moving them a little bit would meet the proposed criteria, seven do not meet the proposed criteria, and if this were adopted, would need to be removed or reconstructed. So a sign like this, wooden up against the building, that is the type of sign that would be allowed. The Retro's Ice Cream Cones, type of sign that would be allowed, it would need to be moved down to the curb. This is a metal sign, would not be allowed. If it was wood and six square feet, it would meet the criteria. The Aroma sign is actually a plastic-faced sign inside a metal frame, that would not be allowed. If it was a wooden sign inside of a metal frame, it would. Frozen yogurt sign, rough-cut plywood, not finished on the inside, that material would not be allowed. The Body Balance sign in the back, that's a plastic A-frame sign, that would not be allowed. So we're looking for signs that enhance the character of the downtown area and are in keeping with the pedestrian scale. Getting off of Prince George Street, a sign like Master Craftsman, that's a chalkboard, that would be allowed if it's on private property, so would need to be moved off of the public sidewalk. The Cheese Shop chalkboards, correct size, you could have two, not three. This sign is a little too big, and it's on the public sidewalk, it would have to be the correct size and moved off of the public sidewalk. Another sign, this Four Seasons Restaurant, too big in the public sidewalk, it would need to be moved back, and again, of the correct size. Now, we also have menu boards, which had sort of morphed into all sorts of different kinds of signs. We've redefined what a menu board is, and it's essentially a board that has printed menus on it, like the Trellis sign that's been there for ages. So there's, there are a number of these in the downtown area. We crafted the regulations, so menu boards would be specifically for this type of use, and they are allowed in addition to the sidewalk signs. We also put in regulations to show that we do have a number of building directory signs that are fine, but they weren't specifically meant. that are fine, but they weren't specifically mentioned in the zoning ordinance. So, this is the quick tour through the proposed changes to the sign regulations that the Planning Commission has spent a number of months working on. The commission held their public hearing on November 20th. One person spoke in favor of the proposed changes. The commission recommended by a vote of 5-0 that the sign regulation revisions in the zoning ordinance be approved, which is Proposed Ordinance Number 13-33. And two, that Chapter 15, the sidewalk section of the Streets and Sidewalks Chapter, be revised to add the provisions for the signs along Prince George Street and also make some minor changes to the sidewalk cafe regulations. We felt that for the signs on the public sidewalk, it would be more appropriate to have them in the Streets and Sidewalks Chapter rather than in the zoning ordinance, and that is Proposed Ordinance 13-34. And to implement Planning Commission's recommendation, council would need to adopt those two proposed ordinances.
Reed, thank you very much. And please thank the Planning Commission for all their work on this. Let me come back to council for any questions before I open the public hearing.
I have a few, if I may. Mr. Nestor, thinking first about the neon sign regulations, I can appreciate why we would want to keep a limit on the proliferation of those. But the distinction between a sign that's three feet away from the window versus one that's closer is interesting to me because, as I think about, just for purposes of comparison, the Virginia Lottery sign that I believe is on the Kim's BP window or just behind it didn't stick out to me in a particularly noticeable way, and it's not allowed. And yet, the BBQ sign at Red Hot and Blue was really noticeable, but because it's three feet behind the window, and I suppose it's bigger and brighter, it shines through the window greater from that distance, that is allowed. Was there any discussion about, in the Planning Commission or Architectural Review Board, about, is there another way to do this besides just determining the number of feet from a window?
Well, first, on the comparison between those two photos, the one thing I would note is Red Hot and Blue was taken at night, where it is dark around, and you see the glowing neon sign. The Kim's sign was taken during the day, so I think that's maybe less noticeable during the day than it is at night. The three-foot behind the window is something that's been in our ordinance for a long time. And I guess the reason that that is in there is so you don't say that any type of sign that you can see from looking in the window of a business has to be considered as part of your building-mounted signage. But I mean, it is, it is a noticeable sign. So, you're saying in certain situations, a noticeable sign is allowed, and in other situations, it's not allowed.
Or if I was a business owner and I wanted to keep a neon sign, if I could make it bigger and brighter and just put it three feet away from the window, then that would work?
That would be in line with the ordinance.
I'm not sure there's a good way around that. I mean, it has to be a fairly objective standard. Could you explain what the five-foot clear zone is?
That just means there needs to be five feet beside the sidewalk sign that you can walk around.
Okay. And why, was there much discussion about this distinction of allowing sidewalk signs in the downtown sign district, but not allowing them in the arts district?
Yes, of course. In looking at the sidewalk signs, I think it was a shared feeling that these were really part of the pedestrian environment of the downtown area and sort of work with the character of the downtown area. So, in the downtown area, along Prince George Street, and in the college commercial area, these are all pedestrian areas. Now, you get to the arts district, that's where you're sort of transitioning into the corridor sign district. So, you would have a situation that's separated a good bit from the downtown, and you would have a situation, if you allowed sidewalk signs in the arts district, then right next to the arts district, you're in the corridor district, and you do not allow sidewalk signs. So, for the purpose of consistency, it was decided not to allow the sidewalk signs in the arts district. And I think it goes, it's also recognized that we didn't want to allow the sidewalk signs all along our corridor commercial areas.
And the last question I have for right now is the one of plastic versus wood, which we talked about here specifically related to sidewalk signs. In the downtown sign district, is, do the current regulations stipulate that building-mounted signs must be all wood also?
In the current regulations, the building-mounted signs are regulated by the Architectural Review Board and the Design Review Guidelines, and the Design Review Guidelines do not allow plastic signs.
So, all building-mounted signs would need to be wood, or what's the other option?
I mean, I think wood, yeah.
That's it for right now.
Scott?
Reed, take us back through the slideshow again. Not all the way through, but just, what's a little concerning to me is, if you look at the, all those, just take the sidewalk signs in the downtown area. It seemed like to me that you listed a lot more of them that were out of compliance than were in. I mean, and I walk past these things every time I go to Aromas, or every time I walk back to my house from Aromas past seasons. They don't jar me as not in keeping with downtown. So, I'm a little concerned that we may, I mean, if I understand this correctly, Aromas will have to replace their sign with an updated sign.
They could, they could put a wooden panel in the existing metal frame, and some of the signs, the material is wrong, like Aromas, or like the Baskin Robbins metal sign, or like the two plastic signs we have there. For some of the signs, the material is okay, but they're too big. And so, we wanted to add some consistency to the regulations and have appropriate materials. And although the Architectural Review Board felt that they did not need to review the sidewalk signs on a case-by-case basis, they did feel that wood was the appropriate material for those signs.
Okay. What response or conversations have you had with the proprietors?
We've, we've had conversations with some of the proprietors. We sent out notices to all of the businesses in the downtown and midtown area where we were proposing the changes to the sidewalk signs. I know some of the people, I talked to owner of the Blue Talon, and, you know, they had no prob, they have some signs that would need to be redone for the Blue Talon, for the Trellis, they did not have a problem with doing that. I mean, I'm sure anyone that has a sign would rather have the sign the way it is and not go to the expense of making the new sign. But the other option would have been just saying, we're not going to allow sidewalk signs at all. Take them all down.
Come back.
Staying on that theme of wood versus plastic, was there any discussion about the durability or the longevity of the two different products? And we spend a lot of time talking about wood siding versus hardy plank and just the materials that go into windows versus what, you know, products that are available today versus what was available yesterday. And this just seems kind of intuitive to that discussion, to force people to go with the wood, which is by nature, you know, easier to deteriorate, you know, because it's moved back and forth, sits in the rain. Any conversations about that at Planning or ARB?
I think the conversation concerning that was not about the longevity of the material, but about what material was the most in character with the streetscape we have downtown. And I think it was a shared opinion that the, you know, plastic A-frame sign just doesn't cut it as far as meeting the character of the downtown area.
Thank you.
Thank you. I don't, excuse me, I have to say, I don't have any trouble with consistency, and I think this is a good idea because I do think it's getting more and more cluttered downtown. I did, however, Reed, have a couple of questions. In the memo we got, you've got, you've got after each thing, whether or not the ARB thought it was a good idea. And some, some things say this change was acceptable to the ARB, but several of them say there was no ARB consensus on this change. What does that mean?
That means that...
They didn't talk about it? They didn't vote on it?
When there was no consensus, it means that there was a split opinion on whether that was, whether they agreed with that change.
I think I would be happier if I had seen more of the ARB discussion on that. I think their discussion, we've got the Planning Commission minutes, but we don't have the ARB minutes. And because you go down to number four, and it said the clear guidance, I guess it's not number four, it's number five, when they talked about decorative flags, and the ARB thought the area of decorative flags should be deducted from the building-mounted sign area. Well, I guess I'd kind of like to know why, and why we didn't make that change, why we didn't talk about that change. I'm a little uncomfortable with some of that. So, I guess that's about what I, I think we ought to take the ARB more into consideration than I feel is happening right here. So, anyway, that's all I have for right now.
Okay. Thanks. Any further questions for Reed before I open the hearing?
I just have one more question. Could you go back to the Retro signs that you showed? I think there was a closer-up version of that. Right. Talk to me about the sign that's in the planter there.
That is a menu board. The size and height of the menu board would be acceptable, but that is a plastic sign. It looks sort of like metal on the surround around the sign, and that, on the public sidewalks, you know, the menu board would need to be, that would need to be a wood sign to, to meet the design standards.
So, in order for these two to come into compliance with the guidelines as it presented, the ice cream cone would have to move closer to the curb, and the material creating the surround in the menu board would need to be replaced.
Would need to be wood, yeah.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Again, thank you, Reed. Did you click through? With that, I'll open the public hearing. Anyone who wishes to speak to the issue of the sign regulation update, please come forward, state your name and address.
Hi, David Cramble, 201 Harrison. I hadn't planned to comment on this, but I had read about this earlier in an email and actually talked to the mayor about it. So, the first simple point is, I hope it's there. If it's not, I encourage you to put it there, that there's no such thing as a flashing light of any sort anywhere in the city. I just think that would not fit in with our general decor and the direction here. I know it was in one of the statements, and maybe it's global, but I encourage it to be global. The second thing, Mr. Freiling brought up a very good point, and there are ways to deal with this rather straightforwardly. We had a noise ordinance, and we had all kinds of subjective environments, and we turned it into a measurement of decibels. And you can measure light intensity with lumens. So, as our light bulbs are and LEDs, I think it would be very, very valuable to have somebody start thinking about the light intensity, and that would solve the kind of complexity that was discussed by Reed and what we want and don't want, and Mr. Freiling's very insightful comment. So, I would strongly urge that that be dealt with, with professionals, and sort of getting a feel for what's appropriate intensity over the number of square feet versus a small square feet and at a given distance. And then, another thing, as you know, I put a lot of energy into, and a lot of care, and got very close with the people downtown last year with this planter issue. So, I'm not sure how this got played out, but one should think about whether you want one of these signs leaning against one of the city-funded planters. I thought I heard it could be in or around a planter, and that's a planter. So, we distinguish private planters from what will hopefully be a continuing city-funded planters, presumably going all the way down to the triangle block. And then, finally, again, because I personally developed a close relationship with all these people and really feel like they're friends, and as you know, threw a party for them in the end, along with the Blue Talon, it add them. It's one thing to have all these people put all this work in, and then suddenly, as you point out, Scott, that two-thirds of these signs need to be redone. I think we do have a method for funding signs. I'm not sure it fits in with this. I'm not interested in fully funding these signs. But just like I came in and spoke privately initially that we needed to support the architects to re, to come back again, and that seemed to fly well with everybody at some reasonable amount. I think it would be good to have some kind of a plan where they come in with a cost to redo their sign, and we fund it at some level of 30% or 50%, if we feel generous or appropriate or whatever, but something like that. So, we really, I mean, everything we're doing here is really to make our city more attractive and to create more revenue and to build a partnership with these folks. And so, I just, as all of you are sensitive to, let's keep it a team effort and share the cost of what looks like will be a much more attractive arrangement. So, thank you.
Thank you, David. Anyone else wish to speak?
I'm Sharon Scroggs. I live at 119 Woodmere Court in the city. And I want to thank the Planning Commission and the Planning Department for doing this because I think it's really going to enhance the streetscape. The signs are a lot of the character of Prince George Street since we've widened the sidewalks. The new streetscape, when the trees regrow, sort of blocks the building signage to a great degree. So, it's very important from the pedestrian perspective that we are allowed to have these types of signs. So, I really appreciate the efforts because we want it to look great. I want to offer comments on the menu board at Retro's. Retro's is unique in its architectural detail to the entire downtown. It was an infill space. It used to be a little alley. The front is the only storefront downtown that has plate glass 50-style windows, and those windows are separated only by sometimes five and sometimes six-inch framing. You cannot mount a menu board on the building. There just, there's no place to do it. I can't put menu in the window because the barstool type of ambiance of looking out the window would be blocked. The sign that Reed showed you is actually an aluminum frame sign with a plastic backing. One of the things that needs to be considered is what would a wooden sign look like in its place? There's the weight of it, there is the visual weight as well as the physical weight of it. I have that sign planted in the planter, by the way, because even though it is weighted base, the signs blow over in the wind. So, did that for a lot of reasons, but that's why it is like that. The menu box that's on the structure at Aroma's has a twenty-some inch wide column that that fits on very nicely. But again, visually, that fits. Putting a box like that on a post in front of Retro's wouldn't fit. The box is very functional. It's got a spring-loaded frame that is waterproof, for one thing, but you can just pop that frame open to change your daily specials, to change your menus, to put up anything that you need to put up in there that will draw the people. And if you watch the people who traverse our downtown, they are grazing the menus all up and down the block to decide where they want to go. So, your display of your menu is very, very significant. Again, because of my architectural issues, you don't want it to block egress and ingress to the door. to the doorway. So, that in itself is another problem of having it mounted right there. So, I don't really know the answer to my predicament. I'm wondering if it might be, an answer would be to offer a, an application for a variance, something like that, when architecturally, uh, the new proposed regulations don't work for a business. So, that's my concern. And I do have some pictures here. I think y'all are all familiar and you saw on Reed's slide, but if you want to have some pictures, I have them. The other thing I wanted to mention that was just a little blurb in there that I picked up on was, um, there's a clause prohibiting balloons. And while we don't put balloons out all the time, we have a merry homecoming when students arrive back, I put green and gold balloons out. I think it is catchy. I think it's vibrant. I think it lets them know that we want to welcome them specifically. The occasion for the arts historically had red balloons from the very beginning when Carlton did the design. I put red balloons out for the occasion. I don't put balloons out every day, but I'd like to be able to do that on an occasion without violating the law. So, if you take that into consideration as well, I appreciate it. And I do thank you all for your time and for the efforts of the Planning Department.
Thank you, Sharon. Anybody else wish to speak? If not, I'll close the public hearing and come back to council for a discussion and action. And Reed, if I may, ask you a couple of questions based on, on what we've just heard. Does the existing ordinance or ordinances have a procedure for exceptions or variances that would be, that this would be included under?
There is a procedure in the sign ordinance on hardship cases which applies to visibility and size. It does not apply to design. The way the ordinance is constructed now is with, again, not having the signs go to Architecture Review Board, just have specific design criteria. So, as it's written now, you meet it or you don't. There's no, there's no way...
No.
Under, under the current...
Right.
...draft to grant a waiver.
Okay. Okay, thanks. This may be a question for Jack or Michelle. Does the existing EDA's sign replacement program, would that be applicable to these types of, of situations or is that designed in a totally different way?
Well, I'll start. Chuck, you want to come up? The, uh, the program is designed to allow people with non-conforming signs to bring them into conformance and incentivizes. So, essentially, it's incentive program to come into conformance. Right now, the sidewalk signs are not permitted at all.
Right.
And so, they are, it's a different situation. If I have that correct?
That's, that's exactly how I would have answered it.
So, yeah, okay. That, that's what I thought, but it, yeah.
The sign ordinance or the sign replacement program goes back, I don't know, 14 years ago when we changed the sign guidelines and we made them more strict. And we had, uh, non-conforming signs as a result of that change in the ordinance, not of people changing their signs. So, a great number of signs around the commercial areas were then non-conforming. So, if a business would willingly make the change when they didn't have to, they could come and apply for this. Or if there was some sort of change in the business that required them to change the sign because they were, the non-conformity no longer applied, then they could also apply for it. But they were all legal to begin with.
Exactly.
Okay, yeah, okay. That, that's what I thought, that clarification's helpful.
So, in this case, there's no grandfathering of these existing signs because they're, they're not by right?
Because they don't, they don't, they're not legal to begin with. Yeah, that's, thank you. That, that's what I thought. Okay, let me turn to, to council for further discussions, action.
I, I don't have a discussion as much as, just a couple of things I think we ought to think about. I'm not sure if that's right now or, and hold this up or think about it later on. I'm hoping to, whatever council wishes. Dr. Cramble's comment about the intensity of the light was interesting. I know we have real practical problems with the sound measurement, so I'm not sure how easy it would be to do the, the light measurement, but it might be something to look into. I think we really ought to give serious consideration farther down the road about sidewalk signs in the arts district. And I'll say that recognizing that we don't have the same sidewalk configuration in the arts district that we do downtown, where we have the much wider brick sidewalks downtown. But if we really want the arts district to be a pedestrian-oriented, commercial, uniquely configured center in the city, then the signs ought to also appeal to pedestrians. And I'm not saying we should make that change now, but it ought to be something that we, we look at later on as the arts district continues to grow and mature. And, um, I mean, I'm in favor of looking at a lot more leniency with the arts district in general to help it gain a real sense of identity that currently I, I think it, it would benefit from having. I think we also ought to think about Ms. Scruggs' point about the balloon question. And, um, I don't know about the application for a variance. I'm, I'm struggling with that because I can see how that would be very complicated. I think the most compelling part of her argument was the character of the business and the structure within which it is situated and how the current sign might relate better to that than a wood sign. But, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm just not sure where to go with that.
I'll echo Paul a little bit on the arts district. I want the arts district to look like what we want it to become.
Right.
So, you know, we, we need to get there as far as signs and sidewalk signs close to the street. Whether that's, we do that now or later, I don't know what's the best way forward. As far as these downtown signs, I, I feel like we may have gone, gone a little too, little too far right out of the box on the specificity and the materials. Just to use the Aroma's sign as an example, I bet I've walked past that thing, you know, no telling how many times. And never once has I, have I thought, no, that's out of place. Now, the body balance sign, it was plastic that looked almost more like a traffic, uh, traffic sign, I can see that. So, uh, I would appreciate it if we would table this until January to discuss it further. And, uh, I, I'd like to get, I'd like to hear some more direct input from, um, the owners of the signs and Mr. Frylers.
Uh, you know, I don't disagree with the arts district. And I think we've come a long way in, in terms of use of color on signs down there. So, I think it's important to note there are very little sidewalks in the arts district. So, um, just sign and maybe signs in their placement on, on the curbs in front of houses that could be a studio or, or function more as an art space ought to be considered. Um, I'm also glad for the discussion about the, the sidewalk signs. You know, as we expand the Prince George, you know, sidewalk down past, um, the Imperial Building, Griffin Arms and all the way down to the, uh, the Triangle Building, we hope for more activity, more pedestrian, uh, traffic in that area. And, and I can see that these, these signs may become more challenging to get around as, as, as the, the fight for space, um, you know, gets, gets tougher, businesses wanting more signage, more people in there. And so, having some, some conformity there is a positive thing. Um, I'm not sold on the, on the no plastic. And, and just using, again, as Councilman Foster just noted, the, the Aroma's sign, which has, um, you know, it's a good-looking sign, although it's made of plastic, it's, it's wrapped in metal and I think it's, it's portable, it's durable, and it's not offensive to me. Um, you know, some of the other signs in there I can see belong more in, in an arts district where, you know, the local artists created a sign and, and, you know, did it much more affordably. So, I'm not, I'm not sure I would support, um, using wood solely. Um, you know, and I think, uh, the case of the Retro's, you know, it does present a unique circumstance that, uh, I think we ought to deal with in this conversation. Um, you know, but I don't know how to do that and I don't know how to, you know, so maybe, maybe Councilman Foster's on to something, send us back to staff to ask for a little bit more consideration on, on some of these unique circumstances that, that exist in, um, architecturally in these, these stores.
Well, we have two ordinances that we're considering. One is 13-33, and then it's 1334 that's talking specifically about the sidewalk signs?
Well, 1334 regulates the sidewalk signs on the Prince George Street sidewalks. 1333 regulates the sidewalk signs on private property.
Okay.
The, uh, just going back to the neon also, um, you know, gosh, it's a, it's a sticky, sticky situation when we get into talking about something that's more than three feet inside a building, um, you know, because I can imagine the owner saying, well, it's not intended to be a sign for the exterior. It's for, you know, part of the decor inside. And so, how do you, how do you get into managing all that? And, um, so I think you're, you're right, Vice Mayor Fryland, to, to kind of acknowledge it'd be hard to measure light intensity. Um, so, I'll just throw that out.
Judy?
Um, a couple of things. One is, I think we make a mistake when we talk about our own reactions to walking by signs because, you know, when you walk by things over and over and over, you don't even see them anymore. It's like driving home and not knowing how you got there because you didn't see anything. And I think what we have to look at it is in terms of what it looks like to a tourist walking down the street. And if it's really cluttered, I think that, that can be a problem for somebody who's never been here before. On the other hand, you also need good signs so people know where they're going. Having said that, I really think we should table this too. And I think for a couple of reasons. One, I really would like to see the ARB minutes to see what they talked about because I think we might want to think of some of those changes. Second, I think Ms. Scruggs' comments were well taken and I would like to look at more of the balloons, among other things, maybe the plastic. Three, I think we ought to look at the lumens. I think that's actually a fairly good suggestion. Four, probably the arts district, we might want to look at it. Even if we don't do it right this minute, we might want to look at it. So, I think we should table it.
Okay, thanks. Um, yeah, I, I mean, it seems to me that we, we want to allow these signs because they create character for that particular part of the city, but we don't want it to be unfettered activity.
Yeah.
So, at some point, how do you draw the line? How do you create sort of a mechanism that, that gets us to where we want to do, to be and gets us there in the right way? And I think, uh, Planning Commission and ARB have taken a big step in that direction, but I get a sense that there are some refinements and, and questions such as it, could there, should there be a mechanism for exceptions? Because there are, you know, every building down there is different because they were built at different times and in different styles and what have you. So, what, you know, it may not be a one-size-fits-all type of situation. Secondly, um, you know, that there are, you know, I, I think some more thought to what, what do we want in the arts district and how do we want to think about that could, could be useful. I think, you know, that there are, there seems to be, to be enough questions that have been raised that either postponing this till next month or tabling whichever we prefer to do would be worthwhile. Uh, again, I think, um, the, the work that's been done has been terrific and has gotten us very close. But before we do something, I, I think we need to make sure we can get it as right as we can get it before we go forward.
Well, and we may also be where we want to be.
Yeah, we may be.
We just need some more time.
We need time to, and I, I, I like Judy's suggestion to see the ARB discussion on that because there, there certainly are disagreements and I'd, I'd like to know what they are and, and the, the cases made there as well. Chris, what, what's, what's the preferred way to do this? To postpone it till the January meeting or to...
If you want to postpone it specifically till January, you should defer it to the January agenda. If you want to postpone it to some other date, then that would be a postponement.
Postponement.
Deferrment or postponement.
I think we should postpone it, allow time for the other boards' commissions maybe to revisit it.
Is, is that acceptable?
That's fine.
Okay, I'll take a motion.
I'll move to postpone, um, proposed ordinance 13-33 and 1334.
Second.
I have a motion. And a second, would you call the roll, please, Ms. Scott?
Please, Mr. Scott. Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Holden?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Fryland?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Reed, again, thank, I hope you'll convey our thanks to, to Planning Commission and ARB. And, uh, we look forward to you coming back with, uh, some additional information and suggestions for us. So, thank you. You're standing there because our next public hearing is PCR 13-36, the Architectural Review Board membership, and this is proposed ordinance 13-36.
I don't have any PowerPoints and we don't need to talk about materials or illumination here. But, uh, this, uh, was originally discussed by council back in October at council retreat and council requested staff review the membership requirements for the Architecture Review Board and to consider changes that would allow for a larger qualified applicant pool for appointments to the ARB. And ARB is probably now the most closely specified by membership, uh, board that we have. And, uh, one of the things we wanted to keep in mind in looking at this is to maintain our, uh, classification as a certified local government. The Certified Local Government or CLG program was created by the National Historic Preservation Act, 1966, and it gives local governments a way to participate more formally in the state and national historic preservation program. So, we wanted our current ordinance membership requirements meets that requirement. And the proposed changes that we've come up with also meets the basic requirements to remain as a certified local government. So, basically, what we have done in this proposed change is taken three individual professional slots and folded those in to two professional slots. So, we retain unchanged the requirement that one member be a licensed architect and we added a little bit ago that may be a resident of Jame City County or the Bruton District of York if they maintain an office in the city. Currently, we, one has to have a degree in architectural history or historic preservation and one other member has to have professional training or experience in architecture, history, architectural history, archaeology, or planning. We've combined those two into one category that says one member shall be an architectural historian, professional historian, archaeologist, landscape architect, or professional planner. So, that would mean that's only one position to be filled instead of two. And the rest of the, uh, membership requirements stay more or less, more or less the same as they are now. But I think making that change so there's only two very specific professional qualifications or two members, that will, that will give council more flexibility in the future in making appointments to the Architecture Review Board, but it will still give the board the expertise it needs to, uh, consider its cases and it will still maintain our designation as certified local government. So, Planning Commission held a public hearing on this change on November 20th and they recommended to council 5-0 that this change to the ARB membership be approved.
Thank you, Reed. Let me come back to council for questions before I open the public hearing. Any questions for Reed? Okay. Thank you, Reed. With that, I'll open the public hearing and ask anyone who wishes to speak to, uh, the Architectural Review Board Membership Proposed Ordinance 13-36. Please come forward if you'll state your name and address. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and come back to council for discussion and action.
The primary reason that we are doing this or considering doing this is that we simply don't have enough qualified people to meet the requirements that are set forth in the guidelines. And yet, we still need a functioning Architectural Review Board. So, from that perspective, I think it's something that we need to do. And yet, I, I see great value in the prior guidelines which required the, um, the separation of, or two members who had professional, uh, experience or education in architectural history and archaeology and then also preservation. So, I'm all for doing this, but I also think we ought to continue to look when we consider new Architectural Review Board applicants and give preference to the appointment of people who are qualified. people who are qualified in that other set of disciplines because I think that just adds tremendous value to the group. And if we could keep it as a requirement and find qualified people to do it, I would say we shouldn't change it. But the practicality of it does not allow us that luxury.
Sounds good to me. Yeah, you know, I would agree. I think there's, having served on the ARB, um, it's, you know, one of the, I think, most, most interesting, most fun commissions that I've served on, uh, and a lot of good stuff happens there. Uh, and there's a lot of people who want to serve. It's just that we don't have a lot of people with these specific qualifications and, and so that's the rub. But, uh, to your, to your point, Vice Mayor, you know, when that opportunity arises that somebody with these qualifications comes forward, you know, that we ought to make sure we give them consideration. Uh, and I think they would otherwise. Uh, so I, I think this is something I support.
I agree with Mr. Fryland.
I, I think we need to encourage the Colonial Williamsburg Foundation and the College of William and Mary to hire more, uh, architectural historians, have them live in the city and help us here. But aside from that, I think that there's, we, we don't have much choice at this point.
It's, it's absolutely the case that they add significantly to the quality of the conversation, to the give and take with the applicant, their ability to communicate what some of us can only sense but we can't put into words and then to create an overall better final product.
Yeah, I, I think the service provided by, by Kerry Carson and, and Ed Chapel and Jeff Ple over many, many years and decades has been extremely helpful for the city of Williamsburg. Uh, but we've just about run through the number of architectural historians, uh, living in the city right there.
Willing to serve.
Right.
And just having a few doesn't mean, I mean, there's a whole list of, I mean, there's a long list of people that have served and have served as well.
Oh, yes. Right, yeah. No, but those are three architectural historians who hit that criteria.
Mr. Mayor, I move that City Council approve proposed ordinance thirteen dash thirty-six.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Would you call the roll, please, Ms. Scott?
Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Fryland.
Aye.
Mr. Foster.
Aye.
Okay, our next order of business are reports, uh, first monthly financial statements. Jack, anything in particular?
Just one thing to point out. On page six, the, uh, we've recorded the long-term debt of the city and as of this morning, it just increased by five million dollars because we closed on the Stryker Center, a general obligation financing. Uh, funds were wired from Carter Truck Bank and Trust to Sun Trust in our name. And, uh, just for, as a reminder, that's a two-point-six percent, fifteen-year financing. Final maturity, December one, two thousand twenty-eight.
Any questions? Monthly operating reports, anything in particular, Jack?
Nothing in particular to point out.
Any questions for City Manager? Under City Manager Reports, we have two. The first is Hampton Roads Sanitation District Regional Wet Weather Management Plan.
Uh, yes, sir. I'm just going to, I'm going to briefly say a few things about this and we'll be coming back to you most likely in February. Uh, as you recall, back in September, had a briefing at that time on the status of the regional study that was being done by Hampton Roads Sanitation District under a federal consent decree which requires major infrastructure improvements to reduce inflow and infiltration into the sanitary sewer system from groundwater and, and stormwater, particularly in, under wet weather conditions. So, uh, as, as you'll recall, at that time, we were skeptical about a total regionalization of the sanitary sewer system. In other words, all of our systems going on to HRSD. And, uh, so as that became, uh, less and less of a viable option, a section, a second option emerged and, and has taken on a life just within the last couple of months. And that is for HRSD and not each individual locality to be responsible to EPA under the consent decree. But that HRSD then would be the primary, um, entity to make infrastructure improvements to remove major sources of inflow and infiltration in the sanitary sewer systems throughout all the sixteen, seventeen jurisdictions that are part of Hampton Roads Sanitation District. And, uh, just to give you an idea, the, the, the size of that is substantial. The number that was projected in the study was over two billion dollars over a ten-year period that could be done to remove INI under the, the federal mandate. So, um, now, uh, a, a memorandum of agreement is being circulated among the localities. Uh, the, the city attorney has seen a copy of that, Mr. Clayton has been through it, and, uh, it is being worked back and forth between the, the attorneys and, and HRSD to, to arrive at a, a document in final form. That would come back to you either in January, more likely in February. And what that would mean is that the city would agree by memorandum of, of agreement for HRSD and not the city of Williamsburg to, to take the burden of the federal consent decree. But it would also provide that the HRSD in doing that work, that cost of that would come back on the ratepayers of the, of the city who are HRSD customers. What that means that Williamsburg would continue to operate its sanitary sewer system as it does now, some, some six, nine-hundred business accounts and thirty-six-hundred residential accounts, all the fifteen pump stations, all the lines. We would continue to do what we do and we would continue to do the maintenance of that system and replacing of older lines that simply are aged out and need to be, to be replaced. But that HRSD would do some work in the city that we don't know exactly when and where yet, but over a ten- or twenty-year people, period, they could be doing work inside the city. But they would do work wherever it occurred in Hampton Roads that was most, uh, cost-effectively removed inflow and infiltration, which now overloads their treatment plans during wet weather conditions. So this is a huge regional, uh, uh, there's a, there's a huge impact throughout the region over a long period of time as a result of this. And so I just wanted to kind of give you and, and everyone a heads up that it's on the way.
And any questions? I mean, I, I think this is, um, has been a good process in, in moving from the original proposal to, for the district to take over everything to essentially leaving, um, localities in charge of their local systems, but having a mechanism, a regional mechanism for dealing with the worst-case problems as they come up. Um, so it seems to me to be a good hybrid of, of what, what, uh, what was not working and brought the federal decree, you know, compliance, uh, requirements versus, um, having, having a total regional system with the Sanitation District in charge of everything. So, uh, to me, it seems like, uh, it's, it's a win for every, everybody and both the city and Hampton Roads. Fair to say?
Yes, sir. And I think that from what I've heard from most of the chief administrative officers, there seems to be, uh, that same opinion throughout, throughout the region. So I think this thing's going to go through.
May I ask a couple of hypothetical questions? I'm trying to get an understanding of where the lines are drawn and I recognize that you may not have all the answers to this. Let's say there's a, a large main running along one ninety-nine where there's a significant failure, then HRSD would step in and repair that?
Uh, HRSD would be under the, the federal, uh, requirements to make sure that that, that failure of the system did not end up polluting the, the waters of the, ultimately of the Chesapeake Bay. However, the, the response for that casualty, that break, if it was, if it's an HRSD line, an HRSD force line, they are responsible. If it's a, if it's a city of Williamsburg line, we would be responsible for repairing, for repairing something that just blew out and broke.
So then similarly, farther down, if there's an issue in Newport News or Hampton, then if it's an HRSD major line, then they're going to deal with the repair and the, they will distribute the cost of that among their ratepayers?
That's correct. And actually, that is the way it is today. If it's their facility, what's going to be different about this is they, if they decide, for instance, in, in Williamsburg or in Hampton, that there are, that there is a, a system of sewer collection lines and pump stations that are adding a significant amount of inflow and infiltration into their system, that they can go outside their jurisdiction and repair that facility. And now we're not talking about a repair of a, of a rupture. We're talking about a, a renewal and replacement of existing lines simply because it's a chronic problem with, with, with the system leaking, with the groundwater and stormwater getting into the system. So that's the big change.
And if that problem, and I'm just picking a locality as an example, if that problem originated in Newport News and HRSD came into Newport News to make that system upgrade and repair, then that cost gets distributed amongst the HRSD ratepayers?
Correct.
So let's say there's a locality or two that along the way decide, yeah, we don't really like this idea, and they decide not to go along with this. What's the tipping point at which there's no longer enough agreement to make it happen?
Well, that's a very good question. And that's going to be the fine print of this memorandum of agreement of how you get in, how you can come out. And just a huge question, if all our, our residents and businesses are HRSD customers today, if the city pulls in or pulls out, they continue to be HRSD customers. So what happens to that cost distribution and, under, under that, and that's a question I don't have an answer to today.
Well, it's also going to impact this sooner because this consent order has to be amended. The court's going to have to approve this agreement and there's specific time provided in the memorandum of understanding for that to happen. And so if the jurisdictions that are parties to this consent order don't agree to enter into this agreement, the consent order won't change and will continue to live under the existing consent order.
And I'm not as concerned about the city of Williamsburg not participating in this because I think we need to do this. I'm just wondering if, if there are enough other jurisdictions who just decide, we're not going to do this, we're not going to sign on, does it cause the entire plan to implode?
Well, I think that if even one jurisdiction does not agree to this, I think it jeopardizes the whole concept. And, but I, you know, because, because you can't separate the fact that you have HRSD customers in that jurisdiction now. So, uh, that's what I don't fully understand what would happen if a given jurisdiction either did not go into beginning, in the beginning, or pulled out. It's, it's safe to say that HRSD, the question is that the consent order is amended so that HRSD alone is responsible to the EPA. And then a jurisdiction pulls out, you would have to assume then that they would become separately responsible to EPA for their system.
Which could be pretty risky.
Which could be pretty risky. And that, that to me is the, the threat of pulling out that would tend to keep people in.
Okay.
In your memorandum, you, you kind of identify what this means to the HRSD ratepayer versus what does it mean for the city of Williamsburg water and sewer customer. As I recall, most of the city, the city bills for both water and its sewer.
Right.
And so how many, and I may not know the exact answer, but how many city of Williamsburg residents and businesses are, have a separate HRSD account?
Well, in a sense, there, every sewer customer has a separate HRSD account. We, however, bill HRSD bills on our billing that we send out to the customers. In most other jurisdictions, HRSD does the billing for the locality. We don't. We're also unique in that we have a unified water and sewer rate, a single rate for water and sewer. Everyone else has a sewer rate and a water rate locally plus an HRSD rate.
In any case, we can all expect to see our rates continually increase.
And the, I, I think the question's going to be, would, would they increase more if everybody's trying to deal with it themselves or do, will this begin to mitigate some of that cost increase where, uh, the Sanitation District has the opportunity to go in and take care of the worst problems and therefore most efficiently meet, uh, the consent decree? And I think that's, that's the advantage behind this. But the question is, if everybody doesn't play, then will the system work that way? And I, I think ultimately it's going to be in every jurisdiction's benefit to play.
And HRSD will still have to do something to solve the problem of pollution going into the bay. So if they don't correct this, um, this surge of water that comes at them at the times of wet weather, they have to build additional treat, treatment capacity to treat the, the stormwater as well as the wastewater. So you could end up with a situation where your HRSD bills go up anyway and you still have all the problems locally.
And we all have, and I'm not saying you were suggesting anything other than this, but I think it, it gets lost in the discussion about infrastructure and cost, that we have a responsibility to care for the, the bay and all the tributaries. And there's not a community around here that doesn't have a significant water presence. And that's really important to the quality of life of the people who live here. And I think it's really important to the quality, the experience of the people who visit here. And I just feel like we have an obligation to collectively work together to mitigate some of these problems. Of course, I don't want to get off track, but there are other things I think that should be done at the same time that would have just as much or more impact on bay pollution. But we'll save that for another day.
Judy, um, so, uh, stay tuned.
Stay tuned.
And, and you think probably February is the most likely?
Most likely. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Um, the next City Manager Report is the curbside recycling project with BPPSA, uh, special project agreement. Dan, welcome.
Okay, Mayor, council. Uh, we're looking for your approval today to enter into an agreement with the Virginia Peninsula Public Service Authority, otherwise known as VIPSa, for residential curbside recycling for a five-year period starting July the one, July one, twenty fourteen. Uh, the recycling program arrangement, as you see up there, there's basically, there's two agreements involved. Um, you have the VIPSa contractor, the recycling contractor, uh, contract and then the localities, and there's four involved with, with this, with this, with recycling. It's Williamsburg, Pecosa, and James City County and York. Basically, the, uh, we work through VIPSa to procure recycling services instead of each little county doing it independently. Uh, that way we generate a lot more interest from our recycling contractors because we're going to have, we'll have a contract for fifty-three houses, fifty-three thousand houses versus, in our case, only thirty-five hundred houses. We have been using this approach, uh, since, uh, the early nineteen nineties, I believe. Uh, the current five-year agreement with the, uh, between VIPSa and the contract and also between us and VIPSa expires June thirtieth, twenty fourteen. And, uh, just recently, VIPSa solicited proposals for the next five-year period and we received, we received three acceptable proposals. And based on the national trends in the industry, the program has been changed, which should improve our curbside program. Uh, instead of the small, hand-carried eighteen-gallon bins we collect each week, the new program is going to be a bi-weekly service using larger sixty-five-gallon rollout carts. Uh, the carts will allow for collection to be automated. Similar service is provided in many jurisdictions, particularly on the south side in this region, and found to be very popular about the residents. Some more really good news is that the, the bids came in, um, very, very good, very good. Uh, we had, these are the three bids we have, county waste, tidal fiber and bay disposal. As you can see, they range from seventy thousand up to a hundred and seventy-two thousand. Um, and the, uh, our current cost is, is a hundred and thirty-eight thousand, so we're, we're almost, almost in half. And, um, uh, I've got Steve Geiser, the executive director of VIPSa's here, and he's going to go over his highlights with his contract with the contractor and also speak to the, the county waste and their, and their qualifications. Uh, we obviously had some concerns with the prices being that low, so we, we did a lot of research to make sure they were a viable, a viable company. So I'll turn it over to Steve.
Steve, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for having me here. Um, Mr. Clayton asked me to address a few items for you, and the first thing was just the qualifications of the proposers and county waste. And, and with all proposals that we receive, the very first thing that we do is we take a look at, at their qualifications just to make sure that we want to continue with the review of the proposal. Based on our review, we found all four proposers, although there's only three up here, we found all four to be qualified to provide the services. County waste, let me speak just a couple minutes about, about county waste. They started providing solid waste services in the Williamsburg area in, uh, two thousand and one. They currently provide waste collection services here in this area. They go as far up as Fredericksburg, Spotsylvania County, Stafford County, and then they also go out to Richmond and Charlottesville. Uh, they have grown significantly, uh, since, um, two thousand and one. They currently provide, uh, curbside recycling, uh, services in Spotsylvania, Stafford, King George, and New Kent Counties. We were, we wanted to make sure that, that they had the capabilities of collecting the recyclables and the fact that they, the, the services that they now provide gave us a confidence they would be able to, um, collect the recyclables for us. be able to collect the recyclables for us. We also investigated where and how they would be processing the recyclables, and that's very important to us because once you collect it, that's, you know, for the resident, that's what the resident sees, but, you know, they bring the bin out, and the bin is empty at the end of the day, and that's all they're concerned about. We need to be concerned about how the material is processed and sold and used beneficially. The facility that county waste will use is Material Recovery Facility located in Chesterfield County. It's a joint venture with Schussmith Brothers, who operate a landfill in Chesterfield County and also operate the Materials Recovery Facility. We reviewed DEQ records. We also did a site inspection. We also were provided with some proprietary information on expansion and plans for the facility and equipment that they're looking at purchasing. And we left our review confident that they would be able to collect the material, process, market, and all of the material that is collected. Let me just go through a couple things that Dan asked me to cover. First of all, is the materials to be included in the program. There will be no change. Right now, we collect newsprint, corrugated cardboard, mixed paper, glass bottles and jars, aluminum cans, plastic bottles, specifically the PET, the water bottles, the soda bottles, and the HDPE bottles and jugs. And those are the only plastics that we include in the program. Since our program began in 1991, whenever a resident has a service request, so if they get missed, if their collection gets missed, or if they need a new bin, and in the future it will be a new cart, they call the city. And they go to the Department of Public Works. We will have a web-based system where the person in the city department of public works can input the request, and then we monitor all of those requests and stay on top of everything to make sure that the contractor takes care of addressing everything. We also will continue to provide reports, which, again, we have done since 1991. And these are reports where we provide information on participation rates, the amount of material that's collected, and we also provide information on the contractor performance, specifically the number of misses. And there are requirements in the contract for a maximum number of misses, and the number is very, very small. The low cost comes with a change, and it's a change that I think the residents will enjoy and will embrace very willingly. The change from an 18-gallon bin once a week to a rollout cart every other week is consistent with what's happening not only in the region but nationally. Hampton changed over from the carts to the bins in 2001. Newport News changed over from the carts in 2003. York County just did it just this past year. They did it in May 2013. Right now, essentially, all the cities on south side all use carts, rollout carts, for their recycling service. There's a number of benefits, and let me just run through a couple of them here. The residents like the carts because they're easy to use. It is very, very easy to pick up that, to just take the cart and tip it and roll it out rather than pick up that big bin and lug it out to the curb. They're larger, so it's a lot easier to put more material in. If you have a box, a cardboard box, you don't need to break it up the way that you need to break it up before. You can fit things in the carts. The carts have lids, which we've, which will prevent litter. The contractors like the carts. And one of the things that the carts do is they're collected automatically. The driver does not need to get out of the vehicle. He collects them with an arm and brings it in, and because he's not lifting them, there are fewer injuries for the driver. Because they can, because they don't need to get out of their vehicle, they're more productive, which allows them to give lower costs. By going to every other week collection, we have fewer trucks in our neighborhoods, and that's something that I think is very important. One of the big, one of the big things we've seen, and this is something we've seen consistently, locally, regionally, and nationally, is that cart systems generate more recyclables. For some reason, residents find it easier to use the carts, and they just recycle more One thing that, just one last thing, is, okay, we're going to go to a cart system. What happens to the 18-gallon bins? Well, the cart, because it's a cart, really needs to stay outside. It's either outside your garage or inside your garage, but it's outside. You're not going to bring it into your house. Many people have their 18-gallon bins in their house. And when you get the new cart, you can keep the old bin. You can use the old bin in your house if it's on your porch right now. You can continue to put your recyclables into your bin on the porch, and then when that's full, bring that out and dump it into the cart. If you don't want the bin, you can just call the public works department, and we will collect it. Last thing is that, as Mr. Clayton mentioned, there's four parties to this agreement. Pecoson, the City of Pecoson approved the service agreement this week on Monday, and James City County approved the agreement on Tuesday night. And York County has not yet considered the agreement. And any questions that I can?
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you. Let me come back to counsel for questions. Let me start with the first question about, there's a standard-sized bin of what's?
Yeah. Yeah. The contractor will, we will deliver 65-gallon carts. And based on, and this is, a 65-gallon cart is what City Hampton has, it's what City Newport News has. York County went with the larger carts. Any resident who wants a larger cart or a smaller cart just needs to call the Department of Public Works, and a new cart will be delivered and switched out at no cost. What we want to do is make the system as, you know, simple and easy and user-friendly as possible. And we acknowledge that, you know, there are, there are many families who will only need the smaller cart. There are many families who, you know, when you have a family full of milk drinkers, you're going to want the big one.
Great. Thank you. Paul?
Mr. Geisler, considering these bids, were each of the entities responding to the proposal going with it once every two weeks?
Yes, sir. And one of the things that's, and one of the things that's a little deceptive about these prices is that there's another, there's another factor in the contractor's revenue that's not included here. The revenue, the contractor makes money in, has two streams of income in this program. The first is what we pay him for the collection. The second is what he gets for selling the materials. And there is, there is a lot of potential revenue in that revenue. And that number is equal to this number and possibly even more. So there's, so, you know, the differences between them are closer than they look here because there is, you know, a significant potential for the revenue coming from the sale of the materials. I think clearly what's happening here is that a couple of the contractors are much more conservative in their estimates on what, on the revenue that they will receive than county waste.
It's really a stark difference.
It's, and it is, it is a startling number, and that's one of the factors in why it took us as long as it did to come to this point. We issued our RFP in July. We received our proposals in September and did not make a final selection until November 22nd. And so we spent, we spent a considerable amount of time going over the proposals and then negotiating with county waste to make, you know, I mean, we wanted to have that degree of confidence that the material would in fact be collected, processed, and marketed.
With the use of the larger carts, where the operator of the vehicle is not necessarily getting out to load the contents into the truck, do the containers then need to be positioned at a certain, certain point where the truck can maneuver properly and with a certain orientation?
Yes. The, and, and when the carts are delivered, they will be delivered with an information package saying, you know, "We have a new program for you. Here's how you deliver the carts." The carts generally come with an arrow, right? You know, all you have to do is put it so that the hinge is to the back, and the opening is to the street. The carts, the carts that I, most of the carts I've seen have an arrow right on the top of the lid saying "to the street." But other than putting it right there, they can, these arms have a lot of flexibility, and a good operator can pick up a cart pretty much no matter where it is, as long as it's facing in the proper direction.
Sure. And my concern would be more about the odd configuration of a lot of our older streets and the really limited space for a vehicle to maneuver. So as long as the pickup mechanism has enough maneuverability to account for that, that's fine. It sounds like this is a full-time employment guarantee for Kate Hoving, though.
Potential. I guess, following up on that comment, what, is there a mechanism that if we get in, this is a five-year contract, as I understand, what if after a year, it's really not working? What are our options? And, you know, what are the performance? I guess the question really is, what are the performance criteria, and if they're not met, what options then do we have?
Well, there are, in the, in the agreement between VIPSa and county waste, there are several pages of performance standards, which we have used for years. I expect that they're all going to be met. But if they're not, the contract has the standard default clauses and notice clauses and termination clauses. There is a requirement for a performance bond or a letter of credit, all things that I don't plan on using.
And none of us want to use. Okay. Thank you. Scott?
I do appreciate that moving in the direction of these closed containers. In my own experience, the green box has caused some problems, and I know that it's been, you know, trash blowing around has been a concern, especially in student neighborhoods. A little bit, little bit of concern about the two-week span, but it's good to hear that we have a variety in size of containers. You know, I know there was a little bit of dissatisfaction when we went to, you know, once-a-week, you know, trash pickup. So I imagine we'll hear a little bit about two-week recycling.
Well, to that, I just wondered, you know, I haven't heard anything pro or con from any residents, and so I wonder if this has been out there long enough in terms of discussion to get any feedback, pro or cons, from some of the residents. Materials that are recyclable, I know some localities recycle, you know, grocery bags. This doesn't include grocery bags. Is that something we can have included?
The plastics have been a big issue, and it's something that the VIPSa staff has spent a considerable amount of time on the last, the last year or so. There are many programs throughout, throughout the country that accept more plastics. And we were, we were concerned because our contractor, our current contractor, only wanted to take the PET bottles and the HDPE bottles and jugs. And with the plastics, there is, there are very good markets locally, well, North Carolina, that's locally, for the PET bottles and the HDPE. Some of the largest processors of PET bottles and HDPE bottles are located in North Carolina. We have very good, strong, solid markets for those, for those products. What happens in almost, and I have searched pretty much the entire country, trying to find a single-stream processing facility that accepts the other plastics, number three through number seven, so the yogurt cups, the plastic bags, or any of those, and market those as a, as an individual plastic product. And for example, the most common product that we have in our refrigerator that's not accepted is a yogurt cup. That's polypropylene, that's a number five. When you put a polypropylene cup into the recycle bin, at the best facility, what will happen to it is it will get mixed together with all the other plastics. So the clam shells, the clam shells that we get, those all get mixed in with the PET, with the number sevens, and they all get bundled together, and they are sold as a mixed plastics bundled overseas, which means that it's generally sold in either China or India. We have long, I mean, we have always wanted to include materials in our recycling program where we had a high degree of confidence that those materials would in fact be recycled, reused, marketed for a beneficial use. And we don't feel that we should be telling, we feel that we're deceiving the public if we tell them, "Put it in your bin," and they think that it's being recycled, and at best it's ending up, you know, in a mixed bundle to China. Or, in many cases, it just ends up going to the landfill. The plastic, the, all of our, we have become addicted to what I call the, what's called single-stream recycling. All of us put all of our recyclables in one bin now. We don't do any separation. The separation is done by the processor at their facility. The worst material, what they hate the most are plastic bags because the processing is done by a series of screens and that, where you have rotating shafts, and after a short while, those rotating shafts are just, just nothing but, but big plastic bags. So they really don't like plastic bags. If we want to, the best place to deal with the plastic bags is collect them and take them to the grocery store.
It's a complicated process.
Yes, it is. Steve, thank you for coming. What, what happens when a resident is physically unable to take the cart to the curb?
We have a provision in the contract for what we call front porch service, and the, each, each driver will get his route sheet, and he will have on his route sheet, front porch service, and then he knows that he needs to get out of his vehicle and go to the, to the front porch. So any, any resident who cannot, you know, cannot get their cart out to the curb, all they have to do is get it, you know, we're not going to go inside somebody's porch, but it just needs to be outside where they can go up to the house and get it. They'll bring it down to the curb, dump it, and then, and then return the cart. We've had this, the same service in place with the bins, again, since 1991, and it's, I don't think there's been any problem with the service.
Do you know what percentage?
Do you know what percentage in the city?
I don't know the exact number, but I, I know that the contract, I know the contract says that the number will not exceed 2% and I know that we have been well below 2%. So, whatever, it's, it's a number below 2% and well below 2%.
Thank you.
To that, I would say that these carts were probably more accessible for people that, that may be physically challenged than versus picking them up and taking them down the stairs and even, you know, some of them have a rope you can pull on little wheels. But these, I think, would help when people get them to the curb.
The, the, the programs that have been, and specifically the, the most recent one, York County, the York County program, they went from the once, once-a-week with the bin to the twice-a-week with the cart, and there were very, very few complaints. I, I believe that, that once, um, once a resident gets the cart and uses the cart, the, I, I think the once-a-week versus two-week, uh, once-a-week versus every other week goes away very quickly. Let me just add that one of the, in January, representatives in the four cities and counties will get together. We will start working on our, our public education and, and information program. One of the things that we need to work out is what is the best way to get the information to all of the residents on when their collection week will be? Because we'll have alternating weeks. What we'll do is we'll get information from all four cities and counties and get their wish list and which day they want and, and how they want their, their routes to be collected. And then we'll sit down with the contractor and do our best to, you know, get everybody what they want. There are a lot of different ways that, that we can get the information out to the residents on what their collection day will be, and we'll just work this out and come up with what, what seems to work best for each individual city and county.
I would just add, you know, one of the things that I really like about this is having one less truck on, on the streets a week and just, just the savings in admission alone kind of work towards this. What we're trying to do is protect the environment in this whole recycling program, so not having that truck on the streets, you know, one day a week, I think will add up significantly.
Yeah, I, I think that there are lots of pluses here. My, my concern, and you expressed this Doug, is, is, you know, the public hasn't heard much about this, and, and so the question for me is, in that interim until the new contract begins in, in July, do we have the time and, and ability to educate people and get them on board? Because change is hard for people and, and this is going to be a change. I think it's, you know, everything I know about it at this point seems to be a change for the good. Fewer trucks, you know, and something you can keep outside. We get four newspapers and they start filling up the house pretty quickly. Having a, a big bin to put them in is, is a real plus. But, but it is a change and so I think it's going to be incumbent upon us to really help the public understand sort of what are the benefits of this, what is it going to mean for them? And using that, if, if we go ahead with this, using that period from January till the new service starts to help people get comfortable with it's going to be critical.
Yes, sir. We'll do that.
Jack, what do we need to do at this point?
Do you have a recommendation in, in the memorandum that we suggest? You authorize the execution of the agreement?
Mr. Mayor, I move that council authorize the city manager to execute the special project agreement for curbside recycling project with the Virginia Peninsula Public Service Authority.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Would you call the roll, please, Ms. Scott?
Aye.
Aye. Vice Mayor Frouting.
Aye.
Mr. Foster.
Aye.
Our final report, or the, the city attorney reports, and this is the hybrid entry designation proposed resolution 13-18.
The city operates EMS services, as you know, and as a result of that, those EMS services qualify the city as a healthcare provider under the Health Insurance, Portability, and Accountability Act. We have been complying with HIPAA for years. There have been changes to HIPAA that have been implemented this year. Those regulations have gone into effect and the result of those regulations is that all of the HIPAA requirements will apply to all of the departments of the city. That is, security requirements, notification requirements, and training requirements, when in reality the only portion of the city that causes the city to fall under HIPAA in the first place is the city's ambulance service. We have the option of city council designating the city as a hybrid entity which will essentially create the situation that we had prior to the change. That is, that the fire department is required to comply with all of the HIPAA requirements and they don't affect other departments. For example, the public works department that doesn't come into contact at all with private medical information. What you have in front of you is a resolution for city council to make that designation. There are other departments that have medical information in their records and that medical information is kept secure in those departments, but they don't have to comply with the security requirements precisely as, as we're obligated to do under HIPAA. For example, protected medical information under HIPAA that's sent electronically has to be encrypted now. And police department records don't have to be encrypted under state law. So, that's why, another reason why this change is important. So, the recommendation is that council adopt this resolution.
Thank you, Chris. Any, any questions? Seems like a reasonable way to go.
We do not want everybody in the city on very heavy, no.
Okay. I'll take a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that city council adopt resolution 13-18, which designates the city as a hybrid entity under the Health Insurance, Portability, and Accountability Act.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Would you call the roll, please, Ms. Scott?
Aye.
Mr. Palm.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Frouting.
Aye.
Mr. Foster.
Aye.
Our next order of business is unfinished business, and here we have a continuation of our discussion of the Stryker Center project PPEA process. I do have one speaker's card for here and there may be others who wish to speak to this before city council takes up our, continues our discussion. And so, with the agreement of council, I'll ask that we open, open the floor for comments particularly directed toward the Stryker, the Stryker Center project. The one speaker's card I have is Ben, excuse me, Ben Ming Zhang. Would you please come forward, state your name and address?
We can just call him Benny next time.
Okay, Benny. Yeah, no, that's, I know that.
Right. Ben Ming Zhang, I'm 705 Goodwin Street, also from the College of William and Mary as well, so I get that resident-student hybrid blend. Great joyous experience. But, um, well, good afternoon. I actually do want to thank Donna Scott for her, for her dedicated years of service and also, I first met her at the presidential election and she's, she's actually inspired me to become more involved with city government, so I'll just leave it at that. In terms of my comments, I'm not going to favor any one proposal or suggest council which one to favor. I think that's up to you to, to decide. But what I do like to add is just my comments based on the previous comments that other residents have forwarded in the open floor. I wholeheartedly agree with one of the architectural historians, I think it's Mr. Chapel, when he said that it's important to put the design in terms of the context of the city, you know. When I see Williamsburg, you know, being a resident, less than a year here, it's truly a living history and I think it's important to also encapsulate the history that goes beyond, you know, after the Civil War era or after, you know, the city was called Middle Plantation or after the Capitol was moved to Richmond. I think that's very important to also continue that, that reputation as a living history of a city. And, and it's interesting because one of the things that I kind of, that came into my mind during the open forum was this idea of being noble, that the design of the building has to be really noble or, or, you know, or the exterior, the interior design. But let me offer or actually tailor a more nuanced definition or meaning of noble. What more of a noble thing could it be than to, you know, draw in the historical significance of this building to the design? To, to provide a vision for not just the recent history or modern city history, but also the present as well to guide for a city's promising future. I think that's a very noble or worthy end to itself and that council should, should consider that as well. One thing, you know, you might ask, you know, what's, you know, drawing a noble, a noble design to, you know, the historical significance? What does, what does that really entail? You know, that, that has a really strong symbolic significance. First, in a very broad sense, it could serve as inspiration to draw younger men and women or younger generation to become more involved in city government, for one example, to serve in the present. But also, you know, drawing in the community as well, drawing in the younger kids to come and participate in this process. But also, even something that I heard in the last hearing is that, you know, Professor Sayak, I think, I believe, you know, said that she wants to bring her students one day and show around the building to critique its design. You know, I have nothing against the arts and, well, why not also expand that? You know, why not expand that also to maybe Professor McGlynn, who teaches city and local politics, to bring in his students here to around the place and show, look, this is how significant this building is to the city and its political process and, you know, its overall history, living history. So, I urge the council to, to consider that as well and, well, thank you for letting me address the council again today. Thank you.
Benny, thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to make comments? Welcome again, councilman.
Thank you so much. Like the five of you, I've spent a lot of time this week since Monday reviewing all of these proposals, and I'm sure you've done the same. My final reaction is the same as my initial one, and that is the Stephen Pease program and their, their proposal stands like a maddock over the other two proposals. I think it's very clear, at least to me, that that's true. And I'd also like to join Judy and say, "Let's vote and move on." Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Chris. Anybody else wish to speak?
Good afternoon. I'm Sam Daniel. I'm the president of Daniel &amp; Company, and we are the contractor who presented with David and Ed on the proposal back in the summer. During the course of this redesign, David and Ed have been keeping me fully advised as to the changes that have taken place in, in their design as, as it has changed from a renovation and addition to the new building. And I'd just like to let you know that we have been evaluating the cost and we believe that we can deliver this project within the budget that was established for the job. And that's really all I came today to say. Be glad to answer any question that you might have for me.
Thank you, Mr. Daniel. Does anybody have any particular question at this point? Thank you very, that's very helpful.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you for being here today. Anybody else wish to speak before we come back to council to renew our discussion? I'm not seeing that. I'll come back to council and see. Can you pick up where we left off on Monday?
I've spoken enough today. I'll wait, I'll wait a little bit.
Not fair.
Yeah, you, you need to go first because then we don't have to say.
Exactly. Back with Mr. Hoagland, I think, you know, it's time to take the next step. We've had a significant discussion. This has been kind of a, seems like a long time, but kind of been a pretty intense process and it's been highly deliberative and inclusive. Heard of, you know, heard from really the foremost architectural experts in the community as well as, you know, general informed citizens. So, I've really appreciated where we, you know, where we've kind of ended up, so.
Yeah, well, you know, where we ended up is, is a result of, I think, a, a good process that actually started off a little shaky, but I think we got it on track. We, we provided lots of opportunity for the public to input both pros and cons. I think we allowed each of the three candidates to, you know, refine their proposals and, and make their presentations. And so, I think the process has gotten us to a place today where I feel comfortable, I think we can make a decision. But, so what does that mean? What would be my choice? I got to tell you, we've got three outstanding candidates to choose from. Each of them very well-respected for what they do, both as designers, as builders, and that doesn't make this process any easier. For me, having heard, you know, from the community, particularly at the work session, listening to Jeff Clea and Ed Chapel and Chip Hoagland and, and lots of others talk about the sense of place and including what Benny just spoke to us about, about, you know, how do we, how do we build a building that serves the community going forward that is, you know, representative of Williamsburg, representative of the green that it's going to be facing and being a part of, you know, the, the community, that's a very special thing. And for me, David Steeman and Ed Pease really brought forward something that I think with some, some refinement will represent the city going forward. And I think it's, to me, it's a, it's a design that will stand the test of time and be a building in 50 years we all can be proud of. So, that's why I'm at.
Well, Chip said where I am. We need to make a decision, but, and I think we clearly have heard a theme about, I find it interesting, we were talking about the ARB and the people we mentioned who've been so wonderful and the ARB are all in favor of one project. And I, that says a lot to me. And I think the, the other thing that I think we need to say and we all need to remember is the, the design that we have in front of us is not necessarily the final design. There's still time to change to, we've all got, we all worry about this and that, about designs. Nothing is ever perfect, but I think it's not, just because it's, you know, on the piece of paper that's been given to everybody, it doesn't mean that's what it's going to look like in the end. But I do think it's important that we pick an architect that we're comfortable with and a company that we're comfortable with, and as I said, we have heard a theme loud and strong from the community.
And let me pick up on that, that what, what we're doing is going to enter an interim agreement where, where essentially, as Judy suggested, the, the process of, of refining the design and what have you moves forward. And to echo Doug, I think exactly, you know, we have three fine projects in, in front of us and there, there are things I like about each one, there are things I can quibble about each one, but at some point we do have to make a decision and move forward. And, and I think, I, I agree with the voices we've heard and, and the discussions we've had, that I think we have one that allows us to, to move forward and, and as Doug said, produce a building that both fits and, and we can be proud of and will be proud of in 50 years, so. Michael?
How's it feel to go after everybody said it?
You know, when we spoke last week about this, we heard the presentations, saw the images, my initial reaction was, and I conveyed it then, and I still believe it, we had, we had a choice. We have a direction on one hand and another direction on the other, and it's about choosing which of those two directions. Even though we have three or five possible proposals, four of them make a certain type of statement and one makes another kind of statement. The question is, do we go with the statement that the one makes and work with the architect to refine it in a way that, that brings it to where it satisfies our functional needs and our vision for what should be represented in a building of this importance? And by importance, the building, of the building, I mean that it is the place where people interact with their government. It is where the community comes together and determines its direction. It's, it's the whole basis upon which this country was founded. And I, I don't want to sound melodramatic about it, but there's a real significance to that that we, we cannot afford to lose ever. So, do we take one model and move it one way or do we take one of the others and move it another? When I first heard those presentations and saw the visuals, my initial inclination was it would be easier to take one of the others. it would be easier to take one of the others and move it to a more, for lack of a better term, modest statement about the importance of citizen interaction with government, as opposed to taking one that was a little, maybe in my opinion, too understated and make a little bit more of a statement with it. But you know what? This building isn't for me. It's for the entire community. And I have heard from person after person after person that they prefer going with the more modest version and then, and working with that. And although I might personally prefer otherwise, I want to do what's best for the community because they really have gotten behind the project and seem to support it wholeheartedly. And so for that reason, I would agree with you that we should, we should go with the Stephen Pease and Daniel.
Would you like to make a motion?
I don't know. Somebody wants to say something else.
Any further, any further comments at this point, I think? And again, I think it's important to recognize and thank all three teams for the terrific effort they've put into this. And again, I think, you know, I can't think of a better statement about the quality of the architectural profession that we have in this community than these three proposals. Because I think any community would be happy to have any one of these buildings. Fortunately for us, we have a choice. Unfortunately, we can only choose one.
Mr. Mayor, I move that pursuant to the Public Private Education Facilities and Infrastructure Act, city council names Daniel &amp; Company Incorporated in association with David Steeman Architect LLC as the top-ranked proposer for design and construction of the Stryker Center Project, based on the Daniel Steeman proposal of May 15, 2013, as modified on December 9, 2013, and now directs the city manager to negotiate a proposed PPEA interim agreement with the top-ranked proposer for city council's consideration.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Would you call the roll, please, Ms. Scott?
Ms. Meechan.
Aye.
Mr. Pons.
Aye.
Mayor Holman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Frouting.
Aye.
Mr. Foster.
Aye.
Again, thank you all for, for all the input we've had in this process. I think it's, it's been, you know, a good one. And I think the community will benefit as a result. Our next order of business is new business. I believe we have some appointments.
Why is it matter?
Do we ever?
Mr. Mayor, I move that city council appoint the following, effective January 1, 2014. Don Kohler to the Architectural Review Board for a term to expire December 31, 2017. Brian Smith to the Architectural Review Board for a term to expire December 31, 2014. Neil Elwine to the Board of Building Code Appeals for a term to expire December 31, 2018. John Alwens to the Board of Zoning Appeals for a term to expire December 31, 2016. Rick Overe to the Economic Development Authority for a term to expire June 30, 2015. Jeff Clea and Lain Macbeth to the Planning Commission for terms to expire December 31, 2017. And Justin Schaller to the Planning Commission for a term to expire December 31, 2014. And Kirk Starr to the Regional Issues Committee for a term to expire December 31, 2016. I also move that city council reappoint Greg Granger to the Regional Issues Committee for a term to expire December 31, 2016. Nancy Carter to the Historic Triangle Bicycle Advisory Committee for a term to expire December 31, 2016. Sarah Stafford to the Planning Commission for a term to expire December 31, 2017. And Frank Ferrante to the Board of Zoning Appeals for a term to expire December 31, 2018.
Second.
That may be a new record. We have a motion and a second. Will you call the roll, please, Ms. Scott?
Ms. Meechan.
Aye.
Mr. Pons.
Aye.
Mayor Holman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Frouting.
Aye.
And Mr. Foster.
And again, we thank all of those individuals for putting themselves forward for service to the city, and we look forward to working with them as we move forward. Our penultimate agenda item is schedule of meetings. Jack, anything in particular?
Well, we're about half a month gone by on the schedule of meetings. So, no, I have nothing in particular to point out.
Okay. Okay. That brings us to our final agenda item for today, which is open forum, a time which anyone who wishes to address city council on any matter may do so. If you wish to address council, please come forward and state your name and address.
I'm Gary Shelley. I live at 205 Indian Springs Road. And I'm here to speak once again about the scandal at 110 Harrison Avenue, which you've heard me speak about on numerous occasions. But first of all, I'd like to just step aside a moment and offer my best wishes also to Ms. Scott. And I appreciate earlier today when she said she has, upon returns in the future, she'll have only nice things to say to the council. Wish I could say the same, but we do appreciate what you've done here. Our government relies on a system of checks and balances. Votes are taken by our council only after vigorous debate, before which the public is invited and encouraged to participate. Such was not the case involving 110 Harrison. One morning, very early in March of 2006, there was a knock at my front door. It was a knock that I didn't recognize, but there was something about the knock that indicated something was quite wrong. And I opened the door, and there was one of my neighbors. It was someone who most of you, probably all of you knew. It was John Lee Darst. She lived four doors down from me on Indian Springs Road. I said, "Good morning, Miss Darst. How are you? Is everything okay?" And she said, "No, actually, have you heard about, the city is buying 110 Harrison Avenue." I said, "No, I haven't heard about that." Now, this is a matter of great importance to Miss Darst. She was a fixture in the neighborhood. She owned a house three doors down, 206 Harrison. She owned or lived in it for several decades, dating from the early 1960s. Miss Darst was older. She was elderly. She was frail, but she was still sharp as a tack. And she said, "You know, if I was a younger woman, I would do something about this, but I can't. Can you help?" I said, "Sure, I'll look into it." From the start, it was obvious that there was something terribly, terribly wrong about the way the city was handling the whole affair. I'm not going to go into too many details here today. I've done that in the past on numerous occasions, as I said before. I've asked many questions, only to have them deflected, or have been rebuffed, stonewalled, or ignored. So why is this matter still important today? Well, it's important for several reasons. For one, Mayor, you are still in the council. And as Mayor, you're the face of the council and of the city. For another, immediately after the council approved to commit several hundred thousand dollars of taxpayer money to ensure the students would never again live in that house, as they had for many years, just afterwards, there was an immediate and vicious response, a firestorm protest from college students. There were letters to the editor from baffled neighbors, as well as non-students. In spite of their intense interest in this matter, these people were never heard in this chamber. We didn't have the kind of process that we just witnessed here regarding our new building. Yet it was an important decision. I intend to give voice to these people who are not heard in coming sessions. Our system of government demands that we have officials who are honest and open, thorough, transparent, and accountable. Mayor, your involvement in this matter has brought shame and dishonor, not only to you, but to others that you got involved with it. There is no place in this government for nepotism. But it was only from the citizens' FOIA request that we learned two years after your vote that your actions were in response to, in the financial benefit form, a request from your friend, David Crainbule. You purposely misled the public by withholding crucial information regarding the existence of a contract of which you were aware, ensuring that the public would be responsible for the inevitable losses that should have instead been incurred by Mr. Crainbule. This issue is important for other reasons. Students need to understand that you have made extraordinary efforts to keep them from living in neighborhoods close to the campus. They need to know that when challenged about the issue, you side-sip it. You deflect all questions, whether they come from me or student reporters. At the candidate forum sponsored by the Student Assembly last year, I asked you a question about the 110 Harrison affair. And rather than answer my question, you questioned me, "Why would I bring back the poison associated with the issue?" There was indeed poison. All the poison was a result of your actions, your secrecy, your dishonesty. And I didn't bring the issue back. It never went away because you've never addressed it. And it never will until you do. I'm not responsible for the poison, Mayor, you are. I'm simply a citizen demanding accountability. Miss Darst is sadly no longer with us, and I miss her. Thanks to alert citizens such as her, we can make this a better community, but only by demanding honesty and accountability from those who serve us. Thank you.
Mr. Shelley, it's always nice to hear from you. Thank you.
Nice to hear such a response. You're welcome.
I won't comment on the inaccuracies in what we just heard, but I'm sorry that the city has come to the point where personal attacks become the way we do business. So with that, I'll turn to council for any other business. If not, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Ms. Scott, for the last time, please call the roll.
Ms. Meechan.
Aye.
Mr. Pons.
Aye.
Mayor Holman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Frouting.
Aye.
And Mr. Foster.
Aye.